Call uh August twenty first, planning board, uh the order. Uh let's open with an invocation, please. Chris and followers, thank you for this day, Lord, and time to come together and benefit our town. Lord, as you be with us, lead God to everything we say and do, may he please in you, and you stand with praise. Let's stand for pledge.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept this presented.
I'll say it.
It's been first and second at all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, like so.
But who first and who second, just for matter of course, benefit?
But the next item of business is oath of office.
All in favors.
Do we need a picture of this?
Oh, don't worry, it's being recorded.
Mr. Vice Chairman, would you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, Paul Norris, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the constitutional and laws of the United States and the constitutional and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the White Lake zoning board of adjustments to help me, God.
We'll sign this up.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes you should have received earlier. You have um looked through those and seen things need to be changed, additions, deletions. If not, uh we plan on a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out uh quickly, uh first of all, congratulations on your reappointment. We appreciate you being willing to serve and your commitment to the community. I do want to point out that Hope uh did send in a couple of suggestions and eventually wasn't able to make it tonight. And uh one minor change she mentioned was that Wes Johnson's name was misspelled. She also asked staff to reconsider uh revising the sentence addressing the direction of the shooting uh conversation that took place about the direction uh at the special use property being considered. Uh and that's to say she wanted us to revise it. It was a little bit un- or she asked us to revise that as a recommendation. It was a little bit unclear. Uh the wording that we had in the minutes. So staff did address that to basically point out that uh the applicant being Mr. Travis Denton did point out that most shooting would take place on the property away from the lake, that's to say, away from the residential uh areas that were developed, more toward the wooded area that exists sort of behind that parcel. So with those two changes in mind, I just wanted to bring those to the attention of the board.
Great, thank you so much. I hear a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve with the uh notes amended.
Second.
Hearing motion and properly second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like so, motion carried. Now I recognize Sean Martin with the stormwater ordinance grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I want to start off by saying this is uh it's been a real pleasure to work on this. It's in some ways been a long time coming. We've talked about it uh several months now, several meetings at least. Uh sort of the direction we were going, the goals we had in mind. There's been multiple times during the planning board meetings that I've asked for feedback and we've tried uh we being staff and with us right now, the engineering firm helping us work on this, have tried to implement this uh into uh the the draft you see before you tonight. Uh I'll remind you that we started this process in some ways back in two thousand eighteen with a two oh five J planning grant. Uh and that's slowly but surely led us to this point tonight. Uh of course, one of the biggest challenges we've seen is trying to bring ordinance before you to consider that is both feasible and practical. Uh as we've talked about in in a couple of conversations, but definitely during this conversation, there are just a lot of uses, a lot of parcels around the lake that exist that were uh created before the zoning code and in that creates challenges uh as to implementation of the zoning code. And with a stormwater ordinance, that's always designed, or at least in in my professional opinion, should be designed in harmony with your zoning code. Because it gives you a uh it just gives you a guideline when developing property. Those two things work hand in hand. So uh in pointing out briefly, I I want to let you know that uh this ordinance and and our engineer is with us tonight, uh Ms. Alicia Goldstein. But this ordinance, she'll talk about a little bit more, but the ordinance does take from our White Lake, North Carolina Conference of Land Use Plan. Uh that was a that was a document the planning board worked on twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. I think it was adopted early twenty twenty three, if memory serves, but there were several action steps that that were recommended during that plan. One of those being to adopt and enforce stormwater controls. And then some of the action steps were to reduce impervious surfaces, to uh revise current land use ordinance, to increase setbacks and increase minimum lot sizes. And then there were several water quality uh water quality ideas mentioned or uh recommendations, probably being a better word there, to regulate development activities, natural vegetation and buffer areas adhere to state stormwater development regulation. So I I I want you to keep that in mind as we're going through the presentation tonight. You'll see it on a slide. That's why I'm pulling some of this language off of. Uh but I think it's a good way to start this conversation tonight about the draft. Also want to just reiterate the point I I made briefly to start off the presentation tonight. Being that it was staff's desire and I think the planning board as a whole's desire to bring forth the document to improve our lake quality and our lake clarity, that being one of the main goals, main takeaways from our stormwater ordinance. Of course, there's protection of property and protection of life and well-being and everything that goes into just uh smart development, uh you might could say, or uh stormwater runoff conversation in general. But um in in taking that a step farther, it's been very important to me, my staff, and and I think the engineering firm, as they'll touch on, to uh throughout this entire process, to try and suggest ways to make a difference. Uh but do so that in a ways that are feasible to the public and not overly complicated. In other words, a good starting point that we can build up on and start to make a difference when it comes to improving lake quality and lake clarity. So having said that, I'm I'm happy to turn it over to Alicia and uh she'll walk us through the ordinance draft. And if you have any questions, feel free to offer those questions. Uh certainly at the end of the presentation, I think she does have a question slide and I can help moderate some of that discussion. Alicia?
Thank you for that introduction, Sean. Uh thank you to the chair and the board for inviting us or having me this evening to talk about the stormwater ordinance. Uh Sean gave a very good preface to the goals we set out to um achieve through this ordinance. And we want to want to reiterate that this is a starting point and a foundation that we also will identify uh next steps. We're trying to work within the zoning framework, within current staff resources and figure out a flexible system that's reasonable um for the town. Um I know there was some previous conversations presenting uh other comparative communities, but we really honed in on what was realistic and for and and not cumbersome or expensive for the town. Um so I will start off, can I, I'm just going to confirm you guys can all hear me and see the screen. Is that hands up or any, okay, sounds good. Okay. So I'm going to touch a little bit just to give you some context of the statewide stormwater programs, what the vision was for the ordinance and then uh highlights from the ordinance itself. So none of these statewide programs are applicable in White Lake, but the future of where stormwater is going in the state, you know, as areas get urbanized into larger um cities, a lot of municipalities or over a hundred of them are permitted under what's called a municipal separated stormwater uh permit. That is coming from the Clean Water Act. There are no counties or cities within Bladen County that's currently on MS four. Um it is a program that every ten years when they do the census, they are adopting and bringing in new communities. Uh so I know that another ten communities are about to enter the program this year. The state just announced that. So it's something on the horizon. White Lake is not big enough, but you know, if development starts uh encroaching or coming down from Raleigh or, you know, from other areas, they're starting to adopt whole counties into this program. Um the other uh program within the state is the Kama program, and those are primarily eastern uh counties and those enforce um regulations for coastal communities regarding the fact that they have shellfish water or outstanding beaches and they're trying to protect them for recreational um opportunities. And so they have a lot of water quality regulations in place as well as um during construction erosion sediment control. And then the last big um program, there's actually kind of two together, is the water supply watershed program and what's called outstanding waters. And those are um watersheds that have been labeled as priorities in the state. The water supply watershed programs are of Jordan Lake, Falls Lake. There's some big ones that are already um identified. Uh in this map, you can tell that uh the Cape Fear, the ones in the orange are water supply and those have specific water quality standards. Anything in these blue, like this is to Lake Wacmar and this is uh South uh and Black River, those are outstanding waters. Outstanding waters are the their regulations are developed in consortium with the state. Um so each outstanding water is different, but there's basically what I'm trying to say is layers of different rules in different places um that can occur and you know, some sometimes when there's a water quality issue, the state will force a community to develop a program. Sometimes they're voluntary and there's all these different um systems in place. So these are, and all of them um focus primarily on water quality and then sometimes on water quantity as well. Education, good housekeeping, there's all these elements that can be part of a stormwater. So we we use these as an influence to guide our selection and figure out what would be most applicable and needed for White Lake. Um so one of the things, as uh Sean already mentioned, I look towards previous planning efforts and comprehensive plans to understand priorities and needs. And there was a lot of uh commentary in these comprehensive plans towards the necessity for stormwater control. Um and you can look at it as an individual practice, as zoning regulations of, you know, limiting the amount of impervious on a site, uh increasing the setbacks and just in general uh regulating development activities and creating some sort of development paradigm. So you can either put some of these in 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 fact, by updating a zoning code, or sometimes you will also put in a stormwater code, um and they kind of work in tangent to each other. So what we've identified on is what we think of, or we work together with Sean, as like the key goals for this ordinance. And first and foremost, it was reduce the nutrients and sediments of the lake to improve lake quality and clarity. Uh flexible options for stormwater controls and for single family, considering that's where most of the zoning is. But we also wanted to account for, as uh mentioned earlier, the ETJ. Um White Lake has jurisdiction over that ETJ, which is currently a lot of agriculture. But if you look at the Blading County Future Land Use, there is an area uh within the ETJ that kind of they expect in the you know, medium to long-term future to be maybe um developed. And then what is, what could be a phase approach? What is reasonable now? And then also outline where the program could grow and how to integrate this with zoning so that it was a seamless process within the existing staff resources and structure and what people are used to. So there's not a big lift and expense for the town to take this on. So I think I heard this uh in discussion before, this is um what the current uh municipal boundary is, and then in gray is where that ETJ is. So whatever the code gets put in, it's applicable to both the municipal boundary as well as that ETJ boundary. And just to touch on uh the zoning, this is the current zoning. I'm sure you guys are have looked at this before. Um so almost everything, you know, the orange or red, I don't know what's appearing on your screen, that would be the business zoning. And anything uh most of the, you know, this area around the lake, if you can see my mouse, you know, along um you know, this would along uh four oh one up north, this would be, you know, all residential zoning. And so a lot of what we're looking at, we wanted to make sure it was suitable and could it and could slowly kind of encourage from our practices, but also look towards the future that all this area, which is residential agriculture, if it ever got developed, that they would be developed properly with stormwater control measures as well. So I'm just gonna dive right into uh one definition that I feel is very important to touch on. And just so we understand, um some of this work with stormwater, uh there's been a lot of rules and legislature at the state level to determine what and can cannot be regulated. So they have defined, this is a state statute as to what is built upon area. And built upon area is the portion of a development that limits uh infiltration. That's my brief summary. So if you look at this house, um you know, the roof and the parking area, water cannot infiltrate, water will run off and you'll run off either to the lawn or to the street. Um so all that area is what's considered built upon area. And when you look at, you know, this little diorama schematic, you know, everything used to infiltrate in the ground. If it's all connected impervious area, everything just runs off. And when it runs off, it will carry any sort of um sediment or nutrients or metals from the cars, you know, there's all sorts of things that ends up on a road, whether it be debris. Um we normally don't want to think of, you know, uh leaves or stuff, but over time, all of that and any sort of applications to lawns, you know, comes into the streets, the runoff will carry it and none of that gets treated and it gets deposited right into whatever water body discharges. And that brings in um nutrients that potentially like algae and other issues can feed off of. And so the idea of a lot of stormwater ordinance is the goal is to create more sponge or infiltration areas to disconnect those impervious areas. So that is kind of the target is how to create and allow for environments while creating opportunities within parcels to disconnect those impervious areas and encourage infiltration. But I just want to go back to that definition, that with that definition, the state has made exemptions. So when you look at built upon area, they exempt wooden slatted decks, they exempt pools, they exempt um gravel trails. What they don't exempt are gravel that gets um driven by a car, anything that gets compacted over time. They consider that to be impervious, but if it's a walking path that's gravel, that is not considered built upon area. So there is a distinction there. Um and then the slatted deck, the reason why it's exempted is that water, it can go through the deck that it's not completely impervious. So I gave you some examples of what those extensions would be. Um so the next slide, I'm going to dive into the ordinance. Almost feel like I need to take a moment because I know this is where we get into the regulatory technical aspects. Um and I I'm going to stay for questions and try to explain this as best I can. So what we looked at was trying to tie it into where people already are submitting permits for the town. And that was a hundred and fifty square feet um for any project that's proposing it. And I think this has come up in previous planning sessions. That is what we constitute like a fifteen by ten room, whether it be a a covered sunroom or a shed on their property. The idea is trying to look at that and what, how we can mitigate that. But we're going to be very flexible and and I'll discuss what are those options. Um and then with that, any area below the mean high water mark of the lake will be uh excluding. So if you do work, that's you know, within that, or if it's a pool or a deck, they wouldn't have to mitigate stormwater. So I just want to point out there are some exemptions to this rule of what we considered a hundred and fifty square feet. Okay, so what we're going to be calling is low density and high density. So if it's a low density and you've added a hundred and fifty square feet, the area that you've added a hundred and fifty square feet, that should say one inch, um that essentially that you would take that area and you would try to treat the one inch rainfall. And you can do that through a low impact development strategy. So that are practices that, you know, someone can do by disconnecting their downsound and having it go to a swell on their property, collecting an assister. Those don't require engineering plans. Those are practices that a lot of contractors do nowadays already. Um you see volunteer groups do them at libraries during a rain garden. You just kind of make a bowl and you do a depression. I'll show some photos and some resources um of how DIY guides. Um the North Carolina Coastal Federation has put out a smart yard. And so they're very kind of low um needs in terms of materials and supplies. It's, they're not requiring, you know, heavy machinery to come on site and do these. We're trying to identify easy to construct uh practices that, you know, even a homeowner could do by themselves without needing, you know, huge equipment on site to build. Uh if it would be a high density, meaning a common plan of development, which in the definitions would be for a a plan that has four or more units, or it's like a multi-unit commercial complex, almost like a a little, you know, if you have a like not, not a single standing building, but you have like a little shopping center or something where it has this shopping mall, like a grocery store and then like a beauty salon, you know, one of those with huge parking lot. They would be required to go a little bit higher than that one inch rainfall to what is a one-year twenty-four hour design storm. And that would just um help also with water quantity. So essentially the low density is trying to tackle a little bit the water quality issue. And the high density is adding on a little bit more volume to help mitigate that additional impervious. Usually when you have more lots, you're going to have more impervious and so helping also to reduce um flooding issues. And those um stormwater control, what would be expected would be um a stormwater control measure per the North Carolina Design Manual. Um and then they would have operation and maintenance agreements and inspections um that they would take on. So those would be planned for, you know, um multi-unit development uh communities.
I have a question. All that low density, wh- what is actually that one inch rainfall again? And and water quality storm?
Yes. So the the one inch rainfall is a standard that uh we gets used uh in the coastal areas is one point five inch and the rest of the state is one inch. And that was designated as almost like what they consider fl- first flush. Um so what it basically rubs mounts to is that within the first one inch rainfall, usually anything that's on the surface, you know, as I was saying before, you know, cars leave sometimes metal trails or gasoline or there's a little bit of fertilizer or, you know, whatever there is. Usually we call the one inch rainfall the first flush rainfall and that takes with it most of what any sort of surface nutrients or chemicals that are on the surface. And so that's um like a state destination of what we consider what first flush.
Yeah, thank you.
Um and I put in here what the one-year twenty-four hour is equivalent to three point one one inches. If, you know, so that kind of gives you a comparison of how much jumps up to a one-year rainfall. And if you guys are interested, I I have in my notes all the other different rainfalls as well for different return events, if you're curious. Um so these are, you know, in your presentation, I hyperlink it so we can send out this presentation and I have it pulled up so I can show you at the end if there's interest. Um what the Smart Yards manual is that was designed for homeowners um with guidance of how to design and size it yourself. You don't need to like hire a professional to do it. It's pretty easy math, you know, it's just an area times a depth, you get a volume and then you can figure out the area that you would need to build a rain garden and, you know, you just disconnect your downsound and you come to it or you put a cistern. So I just tried to pull some examples. You know, some people get fancy and, you know, can do a swale with landscaping, so it blends into your environment. Um this is examples of primal pavement, this is pervious concrete. These are interlocking concrete pavers that also have grass in the middle. Um and then, you know, these are some of the those practices that would be considered low impact. Uh stormwater control measures per the state design manual, this would be like a wetland. Um so these are more uh structured measures is what I would say, because these have to be built with burns and they're built to certain heights with um with risers and, you know, they have a lot more needs because they'll put in pipes, so they'll collect water from a surface and pipe them in. There's a lot more costs associated with them and there's a lot of redundancy built into them with under drains and other features. But these are some examples of, you know, a uh vegetated swale. This actually goes into a bi retention at the end. So this is almost like a pretreatment to a bi retention, but this is for a parking lot that comes into the swale at the Coastal Institute and then this is a stormwater wetland. So that, that's the main water um quality concerns that were brought up in the ordinance. And then the other thing that was touched upon um that we had a lot of discussions, I know came up in a past planning meeting, are the buffers around the lake. So we have proposed uh building off of the existing zoning. So existing zoning guide right now requires twenty foot setback. And we're proposing to put in a thirty foot setback from the high level mark. Um we know this is solve everything, but you know, it helps that in the future, if you ever, you know, apply for grants or you want to put in living shorelines, you're starting to set back any new development to ensure that, you know, in the in the future, if you ever want to retrofit, that you will be able to do any work to encourage plantings or native um what what, you know, vegetation over time. Um and there are, yet again, we've built in exceptions. So we've built in exceptions for publicly funded linear projects. If there's ever going to be a greenway or any of that sort of development, water dependent structures um like piers or, you know, docks or stuff like that, beach areas that exist as well as, you know, no one's going to be required that, you know, you put up a flagpole or you need electrical equipment. You know, it's not going to be so cumbersome that you can't do stuff in the buffer at all, but the idea is to kind of preserve some of that buffer to encourage dispersed flow. And this is in line with um state guidance at this point where they, you can't do any more direct discharges into the lake. And so over time, um we're starting to see the state is gonna, you know, want uh more of those direct discharges to be discontinued and having surface dis- uh dispersed flow um through the buffer. And so this would be um kind of gearing up for that in the future and encouraging that dispersion and hopefully infiltration into the wa- into lawns before it goes into the lake. So this is just showing the zoning right now. Uh right now, it's all across the board, twenty feet. So we are adding ten feet is what is the proposal. Um and I just want to point out for that high density, and this is only for high density. Those high density projects would require an annual inspection, um operations and maintenance plan and easement to ensure that these SEMs are in there for lon- longevity, they run with the land. And then um I will say that the state has uh inspection reports that they've already created. So it's not like uh the town's going to have to create all this paperwork and come up with all these agreements. All these templates are publicly available from the state and so they, it's already existing. And so that can all be utilized already, so they don't have to like create all these forms from scratch. So we were trying to utilize, you know, existing knowledge from the design manual, um the existing, you know, manuals from the uh Coastal Federation to take these resources. So you're, you know, building on a program that has been useful in other places and has been demonstrated as uh worthwhile. Um the other couple of slides and then I'll take questions. Um this was brought up as an issue um that I've seen time and time again. I used to work for municipality and we had the same complaints from citizens of how to handle runoff from adjacent properties. Um so what we're kind of focusing on is specifically properties that decide to elevate their ground surface by at least one foot. Um so if they're trying, not not raising their house, but their actual like surface of their property, such that all water is running off their property onto their neighbors, we're gonna uh require a plan that anything in excess of one inches, uh so yet again, the water quality storm that hopefully wouldn't leave the site that, you know, through all these other measures that they're building, they would have to already do some sort of um water quality or cistern or rain ground on their site, anything in excess would, for a single family, would have to be directed towards the street and try to avoid impacting an an adjacent property and causing flooding or other you know, uh issues onto their neighbors during construction. And then my kind of last slide is just preemptively trying to set where we think the program could go, but at this point was um it just seems like we need to start from an understanding and start having a conversation before implementing erosion settlement control. Um I know there's conversation about native vegetation, impermeable limits for parcels. That could be a topic to take up in the future. And then having uh residents, if they don't want to do And then having uh residents, if they don't wanna do these practices, paying in lieu fee. That, you know, that would be something that, you know, the town could pursue and then take those resources to try to build. You know, a town maintains stormwater control measure or use it for lake management fees. So those are some um other possible measures that we have discussed that might be better suited at a later time after this ordinance. Um would get adopted. So that's my quick run through, I'm open for questions and I have other resources up and slides um that I can share as well.
Uh Alicia, I appreciate that, I I do have a question, I just wanna make sure I understand what I heard.
Okay.
I hear correctly that like for a driveway, you would. Consider a gravel driveway the same as concrete, did I understand that correctly?
So per the state regulation, if it's um continuously being driven by you a car over and over again. And is compacted, the state definition, state definition would count that as impervious, correct?
Yeah.
Since you guys are voluntarily taking taking on this, you know, we you can decide to go with the state regulation, which is helpful. If you apply for permits or you could choose to deviate and create your own definition.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions, questions?
Um in the previous drafts, uh we had a um like a long section of definitions and so like that. Um is that still in there as well? Cuz it wasn't, you know, given today.
Yeah, so in the ordinance itself, and I can, I'll pull that out for you, I can share my screen. Uh there is a whole section at the end of the ordinance, um I don't know if that didn't come to here, it's called section six. And it's every term is defined um that might be unknown or not, you know, can you see that on my screen right now? Can you see my s- my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, yes, there's a whole definition section um within the ordinance.
Sure. And um you know, some of the other questions that I had too or comments, I guess. Um on the. We'll go back to my notes. Uh do we have the uh design manual of y'all already have one of those um from exactly what? Uh a BMP is, you know, with all those. Cuz I I know that was given in the past, um but I didn't see it in this one, but like how extensive is that design manual? Or is it just something that we have to design for ourselves for the White Lake area?
It looked like it was a link in the what we read.
Yes.
Like there was a link there, um if I guess we if we get to the website to click on it.
Yeah, so I'm sharing my screen, so this is for high density, the state has a stormwater design manual, so you can um. Let me try to make my screen bigger cuz I don't know, so they have what's called um minimum design criteria, that's MVC. And for each type of system, um they have, if you click on any one of these, they will come up with how to design it, what's required. So this is all for high density, it's all calculations, everything about how to construct it, it's all there. And then um the NC Coastal Federation has come up for low impact development. I put this link and they have sample guides as to different practices, so they have how to build a rain garden. They have um routing downsides, you know, uh explanations. And the Coastal Federation has done a series of um not just these like overviews. But for Brunswick County and New Hanover County, they have developed a low impact design manuals that I would just. Encourage you to either, you know, uh take it upon yourselves to review, decide if that's um what you need as a town. You know, it can easily be something that they just, you know, um transfer to White Lake, you could, you know, some municipalities don't wanna actually build, you know. Create a new one, so they just adopt another, you know, municipality. So they actually have um low impact design manuals, which I can pull up if you wanna see where they go through all the design calculations. This is just a twelve page guide that one could, you know, give to homeowners so they can understand the types of practices that would be. Um suggested in order to meet that one inch design uh rainfall. So yes, those resources already exist in the public domain and you wouldn't have to recreate them.
Um jumping to uh, I guess it's page twenty-one. And um it's the annual maintenance inspection report and all, um. My comment, whether you wanna address it or not, um it's got on there in option six, the original signature and seal of the engineer surveying landscaper. As an annual thing, um are they going to have to get the engineer to get a new stamp every year for their annual report and maintenance report? It's got like the name, address of landowner, reported book and page um of each lot or structure. Uh statement that inspection was made, date the inspection was made. Um statement that everything is working properly and stuff, and then it says original signature and seal of the engineer surveyor landscape architecture. So is that just to kinda, cuz to me, original signature is like a wet signature. Or is it just a copy to say, here is the engineer plan that we did, but then why would that be required in an annual report, if that makes any sense?
So yes, I can explain this and and I can go back to Ernest to make sure it's it's clear with the language. Um the way we discussed is only having high density, so single family requirement, single family homes would not be required to do an annual inspection. Um the idea is to have only high density projects do these annual inspections. They can be done by any third party person who's taken, the state has a certifying program, it's a day. It's called SEM inspection and training and essentially it's um, there's, you know, as I said, besides, there's forums on the state rep. Website of outlining all of the, you know, steps that you go through, you make sure everything's stable. Um you look for trash, you look for um, you know, is the vegetation surviving? And it would be something that someone and I, I'll make sure, cuz I know there was a section in the ordinance and I don't know off the top of my head. That said, you have to either be a PE, a landscaper architect, or someone who's taken the NC uh stormwater inspection course. Um and they would uh fill out the form, this inspection form and sign it, it does not need to be a wet sealed by PE. And this would be an annual third party review, um I know I've talked to Sean about in the future whether the city would take this on or not. About whether there would be, you know, staff resources to do this, but it would be only be geared towards that high density development. So when we looked at it, you know, the idea was that most of the town, seventy percent of the town is probably low density and it's very. Much geared towards the future if any of that ETJ gets developed and some sort of like subdivision. Um so for the most part, it's not something that mo- you know, single family homes will have to take o- take on.
And if I could, just a little more, uh well, not clarity, but uh to tack to, how about that? We uh also looked at a cooperative extension program that offered a reward for a monetary reward for a person. Doing uh stormwater control measure through a reincentive or through a uh reimbursement program. I think it was seventy-five percent of the allowable cost could be reimbursed. And as part of that program, there is an inspection that's due to essentially make sure that you use the what what grant money through the cooperative extension. The way you said you're gonna do it, so there was some conversation and maybe in the future. Uh there's maybe some language that could be added or the town would receive a copy of that inspection report. Just to file with the permit that shows that even on low density projects, the stormwater control measures were being uh being implemented. But again, that's only if the person chooses to go through the program and that's only when they do the inspection, so there's some limited factors factors there, but. Uh from a staff resource standpoint, uh it's a starting point now, certainly as Alicia said, maybe in the future that is something staff. Can take on and we'd have somebody on staff that's been through the state uh certification program that's able to do inspections. Uh but those are all areas we can grow into over time.
Um my other comment is on uh page twenty-two on um. On section B, it's a special requirement for homeowner associations and other associations. Um it says granting the town a right of entry to inspect, monitor, maintain, repair and reconstruct the structural BMPs. Um why would it be the the town's responsibility to maintain and repair, wouldn't that be the homeowner associations and whoever's?
Yes.
Liberties, you know?
Yeah, so it's a HOA, um this is just a disclaimer that is um so much standard language. The idea, and I I ran into this when I worked for municipality, we had an HOA that did not uh manage or maintain it. And so we, you know, issued violations and if it gets to the point that it's beyond, you know, after fighting, you you can't do it. It's essentially a last um last resort that the town would step in and charge a bill and that they can issue the HOA. Saying like you have to do something, but most of that language is not only, you know, the town usually would never take on their responsibilities, the HOA. It also just gives them the right, like a easement to walk on the property and do their inspection. So part of it is that, you know, um if someone needed to go onsite and and view that stormwater control that they have a right of way and. You know, they can go into and and see that stormwater control measure. But it's really uh that language is in there as a last resort, if after all the measures you go through and you find them for not maintaining it. That the town could take on responsibility and then charge the HOA whatever fees incur in order to repair. Or maintain that SEM, I have never seen them as though I take that on. And many years of working in North Carolina, everyone avoids it.
Yeah, I mean, who's taking on, all right, my next comment was on page twenty-three about the inspection program. Um so I wanted to see if we can add in some verbiage that basically says that. Uh you know, the homeowner occupant property refuses to permit such inspection, basically what I was getting to is to say that we need to. Like give advance notice to say, hey, we're gonna come on your property and be doing the inspection and stuff, um not that it's. You know, it's kinda like right now, um you know, there's the open fields doctrine in several states and stuff about like. Uh hunters and wildlife officers enforcing hunting regulations and stuff and um several of them are going to, you know, different district courts. And Supreme Court stuff about deciding, is that legal or not to have somebody just come on your property to enforce the rules? Um and in the same situation, it's like, you know, the property rights of people, it's almost like, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. Cuz nobody's gonna be able to um hide, you know, inspection's coming and inspection's coming, your 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 system's either working or not, you know what I mean? It's not like there's anything nefarious is gonna happen, but just to say it's like, you know, the courtesy thing of saying, hey, we're gonna give you notice that. You know, on such such date next week or sometime next month or or in the month of May, we're gonna be doing, you know, rolling inspections of everybody. You know, I mean, just kind of as a um, put people, put people on notice. Um and then just kinda have that dialogue with the property owners that um, you know, hey, we're having a special function, you can't be coming when there's a wedding going on or what. You know what I mean, like, and and I'm not trying to nitpick, but just to say, you know, I wanna make sure that um that we're future proofing it. For whatever ends up happening with the the open fields doctrine and um that potential private property issue, just to kind of. Those good practices, basically is what I'm adding, you know?
I agree, I have seen different ways municipalities have handled that, um you know, I so I worked for two municipalities. We, besides the ordinance, we had a internal standard operating procedure. And with that, we had, you know, a list of all the properties every month and we would send out a letter. So we would send out a letter before inspection the previous month and we would say, um you know, this is our thing, please contact us and arrange what day would be most comfortable. During that month, if you can, so we didn't, I've never seen that codified in an ordinance, it was more, you know, what each municipality. Decided to do um internally within their SOP and I. I don't know, I've never worked for municipality where you didn't call or tell someone before you went on their site and if there was an emergency or a neighbor, you know, had a flooding issue. We were called out, we would, you know, we couldn't notify, we would just knock on the door and say, look, we've, you know, we've received these calls and. But we wouldn't, you know, go down the sidewalk, knock on the door, announce who we were and then try to deal with the situation with, you know, civil discourse. So I don't know, I kind of would say that maybe that doesn't belong to ordinance, that belongs in the standard operating procedure and I. I'm sure Sean and staff um operate with utmost respect for citizens and wouldn't just, you know. Tran- you know, proceed on someone's private property without, you know, prior announcements. Um so I've seen that less in an ordinance and more just in, you know, an internal town document where they have an SOP laid out. And how they wanna implement and carry forth the program through a tracking mechanism and how they're doing notifications, so that's what I would recommend for the town.
Yeah, and I agree with you one hundred percent, I mean, you know, Sean's not done up, I had the administrator enforcement, stormwater guy come out, you know, whenever. I would honestly like, we're too busy for that, you know, uh so it'd definitely have to be a uh, you know, a special thing, but again, just to cover all your bases. All right, on page twenty-six in um section C, the uh each day of a separate offense. Um it's listed actually on page twenty-eight, but I just wanted to add into there that it's a violate. Um so it says, each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate and distinct violation or offense, I just wanna add in like. After notice was properly given and the grace period has passed, blah blah blah, you know, so that way it's clear to say. You know, we've given you notice, we've given you a grace period to fix it and then after those items have happened. That's when you're gonna get charged per day, you know, so that way it's not, you know, we try to think reasonably today, but. At some point in the future, there's gonna be somebody who's a little less scrupulous, who's just gonna really try to turn the wheels on somebody. And I figure if we could codify that now or just explain it now, then it just like says like, hey, you know, we talked about that and we just wanna be clear that. It's after we've done the due diligence of whatever.
Um I can make that change, that's totally agreeable.
All right, and then my last question is cut maybe either for you or Sean, um so it's on the thirty foot buffer stuff. Um for me, um you know, we've got different people coming from different backgrounds and stuff. Um and we all look at our um ordinance through special eyes, right? Through different lenses and stuff, um based on our previous experiences and stuff. Um so where I'm getting at for there is on page eighteen for the um, the development standards for lake buffers. Um the thirty foot section, you know, like you say, we've already got the standard of twenty feet and moving it to thirty. It's kind of a hard pull for me just based on um that the town of White Lake is pretty much. Yeah, I don't wanna say like the egg is cracked, but um. There's not a whole lot of new places for development at at the time anyway, like we've already got development around the lake that's already established at the at the twenty feet. And I don't know honestly if an extra ten feet is really going to um. Fulfill the um the purpose of our stormwater ordinance of eliminating um. Stormwater runoff, reducing nutrients, an extra ten feet to reduce nutrients and sediment to the lake to improve lake quality and clarity. I really don't think that an extra ten feet is gonna do that, um and um. And then and then part of that, and part of my explanation too, um is. You know, um there's basic, like I went around and clicked on the GIS and was kinda measuring back and forth. Um of houses and stuff, even even if a house gets torn down. Uh and they rebuild it back in place, having that buffer area, I know we we talked about having the variance to say, hey, if you. Um take back uh the the thirty feet, but then we'll give back a better um standard on the backend, I didn't see that in this version of it. I know we kinda talked about that before, um which I think is a a good compromise really, um and I'd like to see that back in here again. And maybe I just missed it, I don't know if it's in here or not, um do you remember what we're talking about about that on the buffer on the front end, the front on the back end?
Yeah, we uh the buffer on the front end would have to be a zoning change. So you would have to, you have to do a zoning amendment in order to change the zoning from the setback from the street. Because it's like not, that's a lot set up versus a buffer which can be in this stormwater ordinance. So we we decided that you wanted to do that uh ten feet closer to the right of way on the front, like on the entrance way. That that would have to be a UDO amend amendment.
We'd also have to, if you look in the slide deck, you'll see that the setbacks are listed there on the zoning ordinance chart. So um if we do change that in stormwater, just to again, to make everything in harmony. We would be bringing forth a text amendment on the zoning code, which could be an opportunity to establish a language that you're talking about, sort of codifier.
Mm-hmm. Um.
There is discussion that's happened, we we tried to look at parcels like you did, whether it makes sense, whether, you know, not many parcels right now would be affected by this thirty foot. And it doesn't preclude, as I mentioned before, you know, DAX, water dependence, you know, um structures or anything would still be able to be built in the buffer. So it's still allowing things like, you know, amenities to be built in that buffer. So it is up for debate, you know, I I've heard your dialogue before and it essentially is just um kind of going more towards the state. And it essentially is just um kind of going more towards the state uh buffer requirement. So in outstanding resources, their state uh statewide, if you would consider. White Lake is a standing resource water, the standard buffer is thirty feet. So that's, I just want to. State, that's where it came from. And is it applicable to White Lake? You know, it's not applicable based on current. Uh lots in the development. Um, so the question is, is this setting the stage for future lots? There's not very many that have to be developed. Does it really make a meaningful difference now? It only would potentially if there was, you know, as you said, someone. Cleared their house and then reconstructed it. Um, and that is where the ordinance is kind of directed towards.
We do see from time to time too, zoning permits that come in building structures. On the end of an established structure that are closer to the lake that still meet that twenty foot. And so there is, I guess there is some opportunity uh to reduce impervious surface via rooftop. By extending it to thirty foot, but uh the point Alicia made about just appearing to more generalized state language for. Uh, resource waters was really the driving factor for where the thirty feet came from. Just trying to make sure we're in harmony with and and um working with some of those state language. And I think some of that too pulls from the conversation that we have had several times, but definitely we started this stormwater ordinance uh project. About taking different aspects from Kama-related communities or M P pool communities. Coastal communities that were under. Uh strict guidelines and regulations for the sake of protecting those natural resources, those bodies of water. While we're not under those regulations here, I I think it's fair to say we see a lot of the same challenges. In White Lake, they see in some of those bodies of water. And to Alicia's point, that could change. I mean, over time, in the future, White Lake could become a protected resource, so. Uh, in some ways, future-proofing with thirty feet, uh I I do think it's important to point out or reiterate. What Alicia said about where that thirty feet came from.
Right, and then my second question in conjunction with that is I operate a mobile home park right across the street. Um, we have waterfront lots that mobile homes are parked on. And the whole purpose, purpose, not a purpose, but a purpose of a mobile home lot, mobile home park is to be able to pull in and pull out mobile home units. Um, so currently, we've got a couple of units that are right there at the twenty-foot line. Um, and if the ordinance changes and we want to upgrade our mobile home. Would it be a redevelopment, or would we be able to take back a mobile home? Put in a new mobile home that is upgraded, elevated for the beautification of our rental facility? Um, or would it be like, hey, you know, I'm sorry, you gotta keep this old mobile home here for the next fifty years, because if you take it out, you're gonna lose it. You see what I'm saying? So that's where I'm like, is that a redevelopment, or is it not a redevelopment, because technically it's still a mobile home park? As it was intended to be in nineteen eighty-nine, you see what I'm saying? Like, and how would that jive with the stormwater ordinance?
Yeah, I I'm hesitant to answer that, you know, uh, because I I asked this question to Sean this morning. I felt like what's important with this is when you say redevelopment is also maybe put in substantial improvement. And that's a language I've heard a lot where I've landed before. Is saying if you're investing, you know, fifty percent of the cost to, you know, redevelop or something to a different standard. You know, if you're putting in that type of expense, that maybe redevelopment would be coupled. Consider substantial improvement, and then it might be required to do the new development. But if you're just making modifications to your mobile, you know, mobile park, whatever, to upgrade it to certain standards and. You it, I think that's where, what I've seen before, setting a threshold of what is considered redevelopment, such that if you're doing. You know, a completely new site plan or doing something that will raise it to some sort of threshold. So that is a conversation I s- I feel like still needs to be had to understand. Where that trigger would involve in order to to cause redevelopment to. Go into the step of needing, you know, new stormwater, or whether it would be grandfathered into to where it is in the current state. So I don't have a clear answer for you, I think that requires a little bit more conversation.
Yeah, I will say too, but Alicia's not telling you, we've probably talked about that for thirty minutes this morning. Going back and forth and bouncing ideas off of each other, but. There is some aspect of that conversation taking place with some of the future goals too, right? I mean, there's in-lu fees that we talked about where somebody's not willing or not able to meet. This the stormwater control measures that there could be some people to contribute to the overall good of the community. Uh, through that measure, but there's also things like overlay districts that may come into play. Well, I I'm the perfect example, John, to your point, White Lake Drive there, uh, that contains the mobile home park that that you have is. Kind of considered our business district or downtown, if you will, so. Uh, it does fit the criteria of what an overlay district may look like. And within that overlay district, you could see, well, I guess you could see lenient or more uh restrictive measures, just depending on, but. Uh, again, I think probably the the main takeaway here is. How I started the conversation tonight, we want something that makes a difference and is and is impactful, but we also recognize it can't be so restrictive that. It takes away from the overall betterment of the community.
I was gonna say, I relate that situation to the same thing as if you have a um, the. The. Trailers and the uh campers. Um, when you pull one out, you put another one back in. Um, now, when when White Lake. Campground made all of us pull our campers out that year. Because they were redesigning the whole campground in there, that's a whole different story.
As a redevelopment.
As a redevelopment, yes.
And that's a good point, there is some language that exists by going back in the same footprint, so. Uh, definitely something to consider as part of that conversation.
Yeah, because if we're talking about it now, and we're uncertain, then I think it would be behoove being somebody twenty years from now to. Be like, what were they thinking? You know, this is what we're thinking, put it in there, you know? Like, just to say, you know, it would exclude this or this particular case and and I get it, you know, you can always apply for a variance after. You know, whatever, and and then have it on the record for for permanent, um, which is always a, you know, an avenue. But it's like, if we can preempt the long process that it goes through in the expense of. Hiring our attorney to whatever, and they're having the special forum and doing the notice and whatever. It's like, if we know that it's gonna be a problem in the future, it's like, let's write it in there now, you know, um, and save everybody some some trouble. But I do like, just to say, it's a mobile home park for us, and it's not a single family. I mean, I would really love to do a lot of the um, the items, the low-impact development stuff, um. That are supposed to be for a single-family homes, because the way I look at it is. A lot of those mobile homes over there in the mobile home park, you know, could be any single-family, you know, stuff and um. And it's the, if everybody's doing it, and like Sean said, with the grant program of doing, um. You know, having, what was the the person doing the grant and stuff potentially?
So it's through this law of water and cooperative exchange, I sent some information that maybe we'll try to publicize on the website. They stay uh delegate resources to every county in the state to do a certain number of projects a year. Where they do a cost share, seventy-five percent of the costs of any of these. They have a whole list of projects um on the website.
Yeah, because I think, you know, if we all do our our um. Our bits to um to do a little bit, then it can have that cumulative effect, um. And for us as business people to set the standard for a lot of people, just to kind of say. Hey, um, I love the pictures inside your presentation and stuff, because. It's like, when we talk about BMPs and build upon area and um. Whatever the acronyms are, it's like, what is that? But you know, when you take a picture and like, here is. An example, and here's how you can do it, and then if we get, you know, some development, whether it's with grant money or not, to kind of say. Hey, we're gonna lead the way and we're gonna show you what you can do, and that it's not that big of a deal, and every little bit helps. Um, because your your question about the um the driveways stuff. Right over here at Holiday Resort, like I said, across the road there, um, we've got just slightly of an. In inclined roadway where when it rains, it comes onto White Lake Drive, and then it. You know, follows down and then goes into a storm drain. Um, and we've got a moral dirt road, so a lot of sand gets washed out and. About every rainstorm, I'm out there with a shovel, throwing the sand back, you know, and so one of the things that I don't want to have to do that every time. You know, uh, just for my sake, but number two is not good for water quality, potentially if I stop doing it, then it gets and clogs up the storm drain, which would not be good. And so what I have envisioned is to dig down six or seven inches. Um, and to have a French drain that will go to our um, our. Um, buffer or vegetative um place. And then have, um, they're like these little structural woven things that you fill full of rock. And then basically that the rock, you know, would allow for cars and vehicles to go over, but then that water can just go drain straight through those six inches of rock. And then go into the French drain tile and then go into our um, our stuff. So that's something that I'm looking to do myself. On my own, never mind us doing the stormwater stuff, because I feel like it needs to be done. And so I hope that that could be, because if that grant manager comes in and be like, hey, man, this is the project that I'd love to do, you know? And then show people, hey, you know, you can have these um, these driveways to still be drivable. Um, that it's gotta be, but my big thing is about the uh the dump trucks, you know, they're really heavy trucks, and so we've got to design it in a way that it would. Carry the load for all that extra weight, so. Anyway, I didn't mean to talk so long, but just to say. I'm excited for the stormwater um plan, I think it's very good for our 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 community, um, but I just did have some concerns about, you know, what we talked about.
Thank you so much. I took on several now, it's in, um, we'll try to, you know, write up, you know, questions and response, so we can document this. And I will say, you know, yet again, with the future planning, you know. I did, we, Sean and I did discuss, you know, making a specific guide for White Lake. The idea of driveways came up a lot in our conversations of. How to make them, especially with property going off White Lake Drive all the way to their houses, you know, and it was. Considerable seventy-foot setbacks of driveways and so forth, and there are, what you're describing is a perfect example, there are a lot of different ways that you, one can. Design a driveway and do a French drain and have gravel and and not be considered built upon area. Um, and that's something maybe in the future that, you know, we discussed having design standards and just so people could just pick it up. Give it to a contractor, build it and say, you know, they don't have to go back and forth and you know what that standard would be, and the town could easily approve it, because it's already been. Uh vetted in advance. So that could be something, you know, down the line is having, um, you know, those design specs, as we would call them.
I have another question. Uh, in there, in all of it, it refers to, you know, the violations and um, so. If you get a violation. It didn't specify what that was gonna be constituted as. Um, so, or is that like a written warning? Or, I mean, because that's not in here.
Yeah, so that is a municipality-driven. Uh, sometimes they yet again have a standard operating procedure, whether. They want to allow one or two, you know, written, you know, usually they try to go through multiple times where they're not. Imposing fines unless it exceeds, you know, the the son of the letter usually say. You you've been violated, um, please have a conversation with us, have a conversation after two weeks. They set a schedule with that person of violation, saying these are your benchmarks of what you need to achieve. And it's only after you you have that back and forth, then you might set a fine. So there is a lot, you know, we're trying to work with people, we're not trying to just be heavy-handed and difficult, and that's what my experience. Has been, um, Sean, we have not discussed violations, so I I can't speak to what you want. But usually those are there just as, you know, language and then. Through, you know, over time, if that's something that comes up, yet again, that. Eventually gets translated into an internal standard operating procedure that the town will keep. But some of this stuff, I think, what I'm hearing is what gets codified in ordinance and what is more of like a. Something that arises through experience over time, and those are things that, yet again, just want to reiterate. When we talk about those ordinance, yes, it could be adopted now, but there's always, like a zoning ordinance, you can always. Adopt and do amendment changes. So you, it may not be the same ordinance in twenty years, you could decide, you know, all these different things that questions come up that you want to do amendments, it's not. These ordinances are not static, they are dynamic documents and allow people through voting, I mean, it takes a lot more work. But um, some of this stuff is, you know, lives in ordinance and some of it may not be. Until something comes into practice or they see all these situations, they need to work through um some of those experiences over time to figure out what works for them.
Sure, it's a live and breathing document, it's it's always good to think of it that way, ordinance is law, but. Uh, as but one example, we we look at a series of. Laws every budget cycle as a as part of the annual budget process and. Uh, answering your question specifically, we've really tried to work uh hard, I would say, on. Uh, public image in the past, you know, four to five years that I've been here and. One thing that's important for me and a message that I continue to promote to my staff is. Having a deal-maker mentality instead of a deal-breaker mentality. So that's to say, we really try and work with people uh as much as we can and and uh. When it does, if it does reach the point of a violation, there is a process in place already through the zoning code. That would be very similar, I would imagine, to our stronger ordinance, again, they're designed to work together. Uh, but the fee structure itself would be set uh specifically every year in our. Uh, budget document as part of the the general fees associated with uh town business. So that's to say, every year, we could certainly revisit that conversation as to what's working and what's not, but. But again, I I think we, you know, just to answer your question, it would follow a similar path as a zoning violation.
Well, it just made it, I just felt when I was reading it, I was felt like, um, I mean, it talks about a lot in there. And um, it was kind of like, well, are they gonna come out, is it gonna be a Gichi situation? And I know that's not what we want, but I kind of feel like the wording of it is making it that way.
And I'm sure Alicia could touch on this a little bit, but some of that is just standardized language.
Um, so then my last comment was in, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it's it's just legal, like, um, making sure that the framework is there, but it's it's not supposed to be heavy-handed.
So my comment was on the in-lu fee, um, which I saw. In here, um, my feeling on that, again, uh, just so that we could. You know, the ultimate goal is for the water clarity, the better water quality, um, you know. I would hate to really have the in-lu fees, um, because that's one of those touching subjects to be like, alright. Somebody's a millionaire, they come in, they're just like, I'm not doing weight breaking water management, and I'll just pay the fee. Because it's, you know, and then whatever the fee is, you know, whether it be obstinate or whatever, because I'm sure there's gonna be somebody, you know. And and I know what you said earlier is that the in-lu fee is is only for when um there's a. Extremely hardship and, you know, something can happen and whatever, and it's like, alright, well, if you can't meet all these standards, then let's do the in-lu fee. But I feel like, um. There is something you could do, so it's like, it's not, I I don't feel like that you should just be like, oh, I pay the fee and that's it. I I still want to say that there has to be something done, right? Whether it's the low density, whether you've done more whatever, like you still have to do these things. And pay a fee because you couldn't do everything that we really needed to do. Does that make sense? Like, so that it's not just a, oh, you know what, I don't even want to have to worry, really, I'm just gonna pay a fee. You know, I feel like that's too easy, and that we still need to write it in to say, you know. If you if you can't do a fee because of blah, 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 then you have to do these minimum. Something, at least you're trying. Does that make sense? Like, I know, I know we're kind of kind of talking about like the what-ifs and whatever. And there's no way that we can write everything that's gonna cover every situation, because Sean and I talked about that all the time too. You know, like, we gotta do the best that we can and we gotta go from there, and then when things come up, then we just have to talk about it, hash it out later. But um, I do want to say, like, I'm not real wild about the in-lu fee and whatever that fee structure is, whether it's temporary. You know, just to punt it down the road a little bit, be like, you know what? In-lu fee for right now, for the next five years, the fee's on this much, then we're gonna bump the fee up and it's gonna be more expensive. You know what, why don't you maybe just put the extra money aside and go towards this bigger project or whatever, you know what I mean, like? So however that fee structure is, is to be that, um, the carrot, the stick, um, not just the easy out.
I understand, I mean, we can go back and discuss it, as you said, it was, it was in there and. Only if under extreme hardship, something was preventable on the site and they had to demonstrate a case. Uh, and we discussed what that would be and we can go back and figure out, you know, whether we, you know, don't include in the ordinance. Or whether we are, is some sort of, you know, um. I don't know, like standards of what would be, what would meet that threshold for hardship that they couldn't do it. Like you said, with, you know, system doesn't require much space and we were providing all these flexible options. So I guess Sean and I will go back to the drawing board and see if there's something that we really think of or. Talk to the, you know, the zoning official and say, do you do you think that there is a need to have this, you know? Kind of exemption or or something in place for a project that couldn't meet it, because we wanted to make sure that. Somewhere, somehow, every project was gonna be contributing towards the water quality goals of the community. Because as you said, it needs to be a cumulative effort for there to be substantial improvements. So we'll we'll revisit it. So we'll, we'll revisit it.
Definitely, we can continue talking about that, but I did want to point out two things. Number one being, just to realize and, and maybe understand too, that there are some lots that are, uh, designed and developed and, uh, have been subdivided probably, uh, making a little bit of assumption there. But point being, they existed long before the zoning code. So they're already very limited in nature of what they can do. So in, in looking at this process, I felt like, and, and I think our general consensus was that we wanted something in the ordinance to cover those hardships. I mean, primarily not designed and not given for somebody just to take an easy way out. But the second thing I would say, uh, cause every, every situation is unique. We understand that it could happen, certainly. That could happen, uh, and, and to some degree zoning is reactive in nature. And if it does happen, we might have to address it. But the other thing I'd say is the in-lu fee is, is designed for a specific purpose. It's not money that gets thrown into a general operating account for the town of White Lake and used as we see fit. It is used specifically for water quality improvement. So there is still some impact taking place there, a communal impact. Maybe if it's not on that specific parcel, but we can, we can continue those conversations, Alicia and I, with this team to, to see if maybe there's an area to improve some of the language or really narrow down the, the shape, uh, of what consists of a hardship. But, you know, when you look at the planning and zoning code, there's four specific ways that you can generally speaking, there's four. And it's, uh, specific ways you can qualify for a variance. One of those ways is you can't create a variance from, from a manmade structure. So, you know, when you start to think about it in that context, it does sort of, sort of help, uh, strengthen the case. I guess I'm trying to make for why we needed them there, uh, under those hardship, uh, situations. But again, we can, we can continue talking about that zone. If there's an opportunity to improve the language, we can certainly, uh, look at doing that.
Anything else on this particular item? When you adopt it or?
That's the pleasure of the planning board. You certainly could make a recommendation to, uh, for the, to approve or disapprove to the board of commissioners. You certainly could make, uh, a motion to table if you want us to come back with some of the feedback we've taken tonight. Or if there's something specifically you want us to look at, like maybe the in-lu fee language as, as the, I think, one example. Uh, so that's really the pleasure of the planning board.
What does the board think?
There's some points that, there's some, there was some more points added too. We're, we're a lot, it was just a few.
Some clarifications that need to be made, man?
Yes. Think so.
So do we want to table it?
Like, I mean, would, would y'all have the, another rough draft for, for September then? Or like, what do y'all think? What's the timeframe that y'all are trying to, you know? I know it's like, you know, sooner than later, um, but again, it's like, you know, with, with those things that we talked about today of adding things in. Um, you know, um, I guess I didn't quite get all the way to the end to the definitions. I think last time the definition was at the beginning and then this down there at the end. So maybe that's why I didn't see them at the end. I thought it was part of the other stuff that we gotta go to our next section for. But, um, you know, I mean, if there's, honestly, it's like, you know, there's nothing that I, just me talking, not y'all. Um, I mean, there's nothing really that, if, as long as they take into consideration everything that we said today and all, I don't feel like that's holding it up is gonna do too much more unless there's other stuff that we really need to talk about, the nitty gritty details of it, right?
That's kind of my thoughts.
Yeah. So it's like, if we just make the motion to say, motion to approve, as long as those changes are considered and changed, you know, or can we do that? Or do we have to see the full version and then approve it? Like, what, what are our limitations for us?
Sure, where advisory board in nature is recommendation based. So, uh, really again, the recommendation is the pleasure of the board. It can take a lot of different shapes. Uh, if you're asking, can you do it? You absolutely can do that. Uh, you know, we could take that a step farther. Uh, it just depends on the comfort level of the board, but Alicia and I could certainly produce like a, uh, general over, uh, maybe it's a one pager of the, the, the feedback we've received tonight and the changes that we would, uh, suggest to implement for board of commissioner, uh, consideration. And that way you know what was talked about, what was looked at and, uh, or we come back next month, uh, with a, with an updated draft or, you know, we could just simply take it in board of commissioners. It truly is the pleasure of the board.
So is that your first option there? Is that something you could send us? Hey, here's, here's the cliff notes of what we changed, the language we added or took out? And we put our stamp, we make a recommendation to submit it to the board with those changes once we see them, or do we need to come back together to meet?
We'd have to come back together for a recommendation based on those changes. The recommendations have to be done in a public setting, a pre-advertised meeting, uh, et cetera. But, uh, if, if it was for informational purposes, we could certainly send something out like that to the board. And included in language of the board of commissioners also.
Yeah.
This is a living document, so it can be reviewed and changed. So if we see.
In my experience, it never gets changed after it's adopted. That, that's just me saying, like, cause we still got, uh, you know, so, uh, two, two sixty D or whatever that, there really has one sixty B. But it's like, there, there's stuff in there that needed to be changed. And we still haven't come back to it. That's been five or six years, you know, so, um.
So, I mean, I'm getting back to the point of where it says in here that somebody's got to go out every year and inspect. Well, if they've got, yes, for housing, if they've got to go out and inspect to be sure we cannot, we can look at this and just go through it yearly and say, is this still working or is there anything we need to change? I mean, cause, um, just like the, the part that we talked about as far as, um, the inspection program. Um, I like the idea that y'all give out letters a month in advance to let them know when you're coming. I wish that was in there. But that is nothing that I would hold it up over, but I would like to see it in there. You know what I'm saying?
I think she was saying earlier that it was, that was part of the, um,
That's their personal.
Practices of, of stuff of the town, just to say, hey, you know, we're gonna do this. But you're, you're saying, besides that, you'd still like to see it in there.
Like to see it in there, that it's, a notice would be given because here it doesn't say that you don't, you don't get a notice. You just, it's at wheel.
And then, you know, work for the board too. I mean, you're, you're the, um, uh, the, uh, not director, was it, um? Chairman, chairman of the, of the board. Um, I mean, we could definitely, you know, set a date as an annual review, you know, to kind of look at that again. Whether it's at the end of the season or, or something, just to kind of, so that way it's not another five years. Just to kind of say, you know what? Put that one in there just to, for us to relook at it one more time and.
And I would like to see us add to it, like what you, what you said you're fixing to do or wanting to do. And if anybody else does any improvements, then we take pictures of them and add them to this document so that we are giving the public something that they can get an example from.
But I wouldn't think that would need to be in the ordinance.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
Put it on the website or something and share to say, um, but I, you know, for me, you know, there's, there's a bunch of stuff going on, right? So it's like, um, I think for the betterment of the community, this is me talking again. So y'all decide whatever y'all want. But I think it would be best just to say, let's approve it as it is, not as it is, but with the recommended changes, y'all can make the changes. And then when it goes to the, um, board, uh, the town board, cause again, whether we like it or don't, it doesn't matter. It goes to the board. If they like it and they want to pass it, then great, it passes. We, if we don't like it, but they like it, it passes, you know? So we're just as, like I said, as a recommendation. And so I don't think that it's worth the town's time, with the Ravenel's time, it's Goldstein's time to, uh, hold up the processing longer. Just to say, you know what? Let's get it done, um, with the recommended changes. They make the recommended changes. Hopefully it's good. It goes to the town board and then we can move on with the, with the process. Because then we can get grant money and whatever else, the, whatever we need to do for the town implementation, hiring of whoever we're gonna hire for the administrator. And, you know, stuff like that. So I know that was a long-winded thing, but that would be my motion if, if, if that is understandable for everybody.
Well, you state that clearly as a motion, so.
But if y'all want to have any other motion to table it, I think now would be a time, if Wade, like you said, if you need more time that you would want to look at it, then that would be another motion to make, would be to table it for one more time and see a final draft.
So what I've heard is to recommend the ordinance with the recommended changes to the town board. Alright, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Same here.
I second it. Alright, so I have a motion. If all those in favor say aye. Uh, all those pose lights in, motion good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of general comments. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to say that, uh, the input of the planning board is extremely beneficial. Uh, I take it very, uh, seriously and, uh, I can tell you that this, this plan specifically is a culmination of your input throughout the process. So I, I don't want anybody to think your input's not important. It, it's very important to me and really gives me some, some, some good feedback and, and in some ways a good direction and a good sense of community as to ways to take it. We can talk about best practice all day long, but if it doesn't fit the community, especially through the eyes of community property owners, then we're doing something wrong. So, uh, just want to say that about the, whether we approve it or disapprove it.
That it's, you're disavowed, like you said, it's disavowed.
Well, yes, it is, but it's extremely important, all the same. And I will also say, I understand that, that you need to be careful what you wish for because you just might give it.
Yes.
Having said that, the planning board members can always recommend agenda items as, as a review or as a conversation, as a text amendment, as any type of general planning and zoning, uh, conversation or, or follow-up to be on the agenda and we can certainly go through those. So I want to just point that out as part of the process. Don't, don't let any type of timeframe discourage you. If there's something as a planning board member that you'd like to talk about, contact Madam clerk, contact myself and let's, let's get on the agenda and, and review it. So to the point of we can look at this year that we absolutely can't. And we can, we can continue to talk about it because it is a living, breathing document. And it's, the ultimate goal is for the betterment of our community. So again, be careful what you wish for, but at the same time, uh, in pointing out process, uh, it is certainly available to you and I'd encourage you to utilize it if there's something that you would like to, uh, see as an agenda. Alright, and lastly, Chairman, I do want to thank, uh, Alicia for all the contributions along the way. And Withers has, uh, in my opinion, done a phenomenal job helping, uh, shape this and, and take our original draft from our two oh five J grant that I mentioned in the very beginning in its presentation and turn it into something, uh, that we see today. So, uh, for my staff and I think behalf of the planning board, thank you, Alicia, and, and your team as well.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we'll follow up with a Q and A of where we addressed the comments. And, um, I was gonna say thank you and I don't know if you need me present anymore, but I was going to say good night unless you need me to stay on for any future questions at this point. Thank you. Bye.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, looks like we need to review the zoning ordinance.
Here we go reviewing already. I'll be brief here. I, I understand that there is, uh, our presentation, uh, previously was, um, it, it did take some time, so I don't want to hold up, uh, too much of your time. But I do want to bring this to the attention of the board because we have gotten some questions specifically on, uh, agenda items and, and how, well, not agenda items, excuse me, minutes, how minutes are written and how motions are made and how seconds are made. And, uh, we have some new members on the board. We've got some old members on the board. We've got, uh, members that have done things a certain way for a long period of time. It may not have been correct. So, uh, just a good, a good opportunity when, when questions arise to frame things, the attention of the board in its entirety. So having said that, I do want to just point out from a membership standpoint, our board consists of six members. Uh, and that's why tonight for our forum, we benefit because of a forum, it with six members is four out of six. So, uh, in, in saying that, the way it's constructed and you'll see it in your book, but it's, uh, for those that may be listening online or, or watching the meeting recording, it's four point six point three in our ordinance. That's article four, chapter six, section three. And it talks about the membership of the organization, the advisory board. Uh, but again, six members, five of those being, uh, from the town limits. One of those being an ETJ member, extraterritorial jurisdiction member. Uh, of the five members from the town, four of those are generally, uh, property owners. One of those can be, uh, in our case is a member, uh, of the community that owns a business within the town limits. Uh, and from those six members, the, the five that are available, uh, from town limits, you can have two alternates for those five members in town limits. And then you can have two alternates for the one ETJ member. So altogether, you could possibly have, uh, ten members on the board, but six have voting rights. So what that means essentially is, like in a case like tonight, when there is a, uh, member that's not present, the alternate member is, is, uh, given the voting rights for that member, uh, at that meeting. So the alternate members are very important and the alternate members take part in conversation along the way. We encourage our alternate members to attend our meetings. We encourage our alternate members to get involved in the conversation. Their feedback is purely, critically important. But, uh, again, since it's come up in the past, uh, recently about, uh, the membership and, and how the minutes are written and why motions are written the way they are from a numbers standpoint. I wanted to bring that to the attention of the board and just taking it one step farther for clarification standpoint. I want to point out that our, uh, five in-town members are, of course, our planning board chair, Mr. Paul Norris. Uh, our member, Hope Campbell, our member, Sarah Cook, our member, Sky Moore. And then we have our business member, Jonathan Langston. Our alternates, our two alternates in town are Ms. Lisa Young and Ms. Janaye Pope. And then our ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction member is Mr. Wade Lowery, who also serves as our vice chair. Uh, and we need two more often. So if anybody knows of someone available in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, our ETJ, that'd be willing to serve, uh, on the board, please let me, myself, uh, excuse me, myself, my staff or someone at the board of commissioners level in the county aware of that, make them aware of that. And we can certainly get them added to the board, uh, for the betterment of the conversation. And in the event Mr. Lowery misses a meeting, we'll have an alternate to take that place. Uh, just as one point of clarification, if the ETJ member misses, that alternate from in-town cannot take the place of, uh, it's a technicality thing, but, um, in that instance, I just want to point that out. So if there are any questions, Mr. Chair, just a brief rundown of how membership works and the way it's structured. And, um, again, I said it earlier, but look forward to working with everybody on this board. And I thank you, uh, for your contribution to our community and your input on our, uh, planning and zoning discussions.
Thank you for that clarification.
Um, now being a member now, um, I wasn't limited on my voting. Uh, is it still the same where I could only vote for things that's in the extraterritorial or can I now vote with in-town? As a member.
As I understand it, the ETJ member has full voting rights.
Good deal. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, any other business that we know of needs to come forward, forward? Now it's time for open forum for the public, but I don't see any public, so we'll pass, I don't pass that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Yeah, I'm saying it.
Alright. Uh, do we have to make all that?
Yeah.
To adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor?